I'm just waiting for the subtitle to be removed. Okay, it is, and I will call to order the special meeting of the Glendale Successor Agency. Can we have a roll call, please?
Agency members.
Here.
Taro.
Here.
Sanion.
Here.
Chair Weaver. Vice Chair Frieden.
Here. Can we hear your report, please?
The agenda for the April 1st, 2014, special public meeting of the successor agency was postponed on Thursday, March 27, 2014, on the first floor outside City Hall.
Thank you. First item, only item.
Only item on this agenda is Director of Economic Development regarding second revision to the Long Range Property Management Plan, LRPMP, at 1A as a resolution revising said plan.
Thank you. Who would like to present this? Mr. Lanza Fain?
As Vice Chair, members of the successor agency last week, I think you got a bit of a preview on why we're back here again. It is at the direction of the Department of Finance to make some what we believe to be our final changes. I do want to go over some of the changes that we're making, the property designations, because it may require some action by the city later on. The statute has us classify into four different areas. We had listed four properties to retain, to fulfill an enforceable obligation. The Department of Finance said, "We can't do that just merely having a long-term lease, like we do at the Americana brand." So they had given us other choices. We asked about government use for the Alex Theater. That was rejected. So we were really left with either selling the property or having the city retain it for future development. That requires two things, that first, the property and project be identified in a redevelopment plan, and that definition's been somewhat expanded, and second, that these transfers are subject to the city entering into compensation agreements with the other taxing entities. So with that as a bit of a background, there was these four properties that we had characterized as fulfilling enforceable obligations that the department said, "We won't allow that. You'll need to change it if you want to get your plan approved." With respect to the Alex Theater, we would like to designate that for city retention, subject to future development, and with the intent to enter into compensation agreements. I think that the Alex Theater, it currently operates, the redevelopment agency was subsidizing it. I know that all of the other taxing entities have lauded the theater and said, "What a great asset it is. We would like the opportunity to go to them and say, 'Let the city retain it and continue to operate it under some long-term agreement with Glendale Arts or some other manager.'" The Museum of Neon Art, same thing. We would like to designate that for future development and see if we can come to a compensation agreement. I should add that the department, in our conversation with them, the department indicated that if we were unable to enter into these agreements, we could come back and amend the plan. So it's not something that we're obligated to do. We could change the plan in the future to just sell the property if we needed to. The Lemley Lofts Project, that is one that we went around, we entered into a compensation agreement, if you remember, but that required an amended and restated disposition development agreement to add dollars to put in subterranean parking. We believe, staff believes, that the statute would allow, I'm sorry, you had to made findings that there was a net revenue increase, that there were reduced liabilities, and that it was in the best interest of the taxing entities. You made those findings, the Oversight Board made those findings, and the department did not recognize them, saying, "We don't think that you've demonstrated that you've reduced liabilities." Our staff, legal counsel, believed that we have. The alternative was to sue the department, hold up our entire plan until that was resolved. The other alternative in what we're recommending to you today is to list this property for fulfillment of an obligation, the original obligation that the department has recognized. That is to include the property, to assist the project with a million and a half dollars that we already have approved by the Department of Finance, and then build the project. Now, we would like to, in our plan, say that that's what we're going to do, and then the city make a deal with the developer, an agreement, to add the additional $1.1 million, our share for that underground parking. If you recall, the city has already committed to pay $728,000 through that compensation agreement. So that agreement is now null and void since the department won't recognize our amended and restated disposition development agreement. So we were already going to contribute that. Because we won't be spending that $1.1 out of tax increment, there's about $150,000 coming back to Glendale that we could put into that project. So the net increase is about $230,000. We think that there's enough residual redevelopment dollars that the city's general fund was not otherwise counting on that would be accrued to us before that payment is due sometime in fiscal year 1617. The department, completely independent, had left us a message and said, "Well, why don't you just go forward with the original agreement and have the city outside make that additional payment?" So that is what we're recommending to you. We think we can finance that with the dollars that will come back to us through the dissolution of redevelopment. The final property is the Americana brand. It's the ground lease, the long-term ground lease on which the parking garage sits. Again, it's a 99-year lease with all of the options included, and we assumed and believed that that is fulfilling an obligation. The department said, "No." They did advise us that we could direct the sale of that property, as long as it is for fair market value or reasonable value. We would recommend putting it, designating it for sale, and then approaching the likely buyer, which is Caruso affiliated. That property is, again, subject to a 99-year lease, $1 a year, and several covenants to keep that as public parking for the project and the open space. So those are our recommendations. We're asking you to approve those. They are noted in the rose color in your packet, the most recent ones. If you approve these, we will go to the Oversight Board tomorrow. The Department of Finance is well aware of all of the recommendations that we're making, said that they could do an expedited review. We would hope to have an approval of our entire plan by next week.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Najarian?
I have all sorts of questions. I can't say I understood everything that you explained, or half of everything you explained. Let's just go through it slowly with me.
Okay.
The Department of Finance rejected our claim that the retention of these four properties is a prop, because long-term lease in itself, in and of itself, is not a significantly obligatory obligation.
The way that they had, the way that, a lot of words that were used, but basically they said, "You could sell this property subject to the lease. So you don't have any further obligations other than maintaining this lease. You don't have any obligations with the money that comes from that lease. So you could sell this property subject to that lease, and that's what you need to do, or retain it for future development."
Right. So don't cry to us. You can sell the Alex Theater with the lease in place, and things will work out in the exchange and the purchase and sale. And we said, "Oh, no." Did we say it was an enforceable obligation? We didn't mean that. We meant it's a property that we're holding for future development, correct?
Well...
I mean, that's our new position.
That is a position when the one that we had was rejected.
Okay. Plan B. So when we say, when we tell the Department of Finance, someone signs off on this, that we're gonna hold this for future development, I mean, are we saying that with a straight face, that we're gonna hold the Alex and we're gonna redevelop the Alex Theater at some point? What does that mean?
It's a good question, because...
Future development.
Because future development, the way that we're characterizing it, is the renovation and retention of this historic property. It could also be something that happens to the north, or anywhere else. But the main point is that we will continue to maintain and renovate this historic structure. And that, according to the department, qualifies as future development.
Okay. Now, at the same time, there are these other taxing entities out there that are expecting income that they would otherwise receive from the sale of this asset. So we're gonna go to the school district and say, "We're gonna pay you money so we can keep the Alex." Is that what the deal is?
Our intention is to go to all of them and say, two things. Our intention would be to say, "Let the city retain this." Same thing, because they all benefit from it. The county, this is a regional performing arts center, so the county has constituents, not only in Glendale, that are coming and using the theater. The school district uses the theater, they have educational programs, they're the box office for Glendale College. So they all have an interest in maintaining the theater as a regional performing arts center. If the property was sold, we've limited the uses, but it may not be a regional performing arts center. And so it's our strategy to go to each of them and say, "Allow the city to maintain this for a nominal amount, retain this building, and continue to operate it as a performing arts center."
Mr. Najarian, if I might add, we were informed by the analysts at DOF that, with respect to the compensation agreement Mr. Lanza Fain is referring to, that the DOF didn't care if that was a dollar, so long as, for purposes of the future development, which is not defined within the statute, that two prongs are met for this approval. And that is the intent of the successor agency to, the intent of the city to enter into this compensation agreement for whatever amount that those taxing entities agree to, and that it is listed somewhere in a, quote, "redevelopment plan," a very expanded definition of redevelopment plan, and that would be the implementation plans, approved resolutions. It's a fairly exhaustive list, which might show what the future intent of the city is with respect to the retention of the asset.
So the redevelopment could be improvements to the Alex Theater. It doesn't have to mean bulldozing the building...
That's right.
...and putting up an apartment building. It could be just, sometime in the future, we're gonna make this a bigger and better theater.
That's correct. We don't see it being limited to a comprehensive redevelopment or restoration of any form. It's simply not defined there.
Okay. So aside from the school district, what other benevolent taxing agency do we deal with?
The county of Los Angeles, the county...
Oh, they love us.
The county has majority, the supervisors have the majority, actually, I think they vote for all of the other taxing entities, save the school district and the college district.
There's the flood control district, and et cetera, et cetera. What are our chances of paying them a dollar and telling them, "Let us keep the Alex"?
Actually, I think pretty good, based on what we've done in the past. I think what the DOF is doing, the reason why we're going through this ridiculous exercise yet again, is because the Oversight Boards that were set up as part of the statute are not acting as the negative claims adjuster, saying no to everything. In fact, our Oversight Board generally votes unanimously on well more than 90% of the items that come before it, and I think you're seeing that up and down the state. And so the DOF is saying, "Shoot, the Oversight Boards aren't acting as that filter that's stopping agencies from doing these things. So now we're having to redefine the rules and basically negate the value of even having an Oversight Board."
Okay. And the ownership of the Alex, isn't it, didn't we give it to the Alex Board, or the...
Currently, it is the successor agency who leases that property to Glendale Arts, and then there's also a management agreement where they manage the theater for us.
So how is the, I mean, so then when we talk, we're talking about the successor agency, as the Board currently convened, is the successor agency, it's not technically the city, it's the successor agency?
Correct.
Okay. Now, we all love the Alex Theater, we should fight hard to save it. Let's move to Mona. Is it the same argument with Mona, that we are, we're holding, the successor agency owns the property, we've entered into a lease, was it five, 10 years, something like that, isn't it?
Actually, I think it's, yeah.
Okay.
Twenty and twenty.
So the same thing. We then go to the, our brothers, our taxing agency brothers, the county, the school district, whoever else there may be, and we say, "We'd like to retain this property, because it's a regional museum," or whatever we say, "And, well, here's a dollar for you, and a dollar for you, and let us retain ownership," because, again, this would fall under the future development.
Correct.
Does the fact that we have that ultra-generous lease with Mona affect anything in the consideration that the DOF is gonna...
I believe it will, because ultimately, you have to have the properties appraised, and that favorable lease is going to play into the value of the property.
So the DOF is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, Jillian, that they really don't even care what the amount ultimately is, they want to see us divest. And so it's kind of, it's a bit of a ridiculous exercise, saying, "For a dollar, go ahead and do it, we just want to show it leaving the books." You have folks that, with all due respect to the DOF, they've brought on a bunch of accountants to close out these deals, but they're not party to the deals and don't understand them for the most part. I mean, they're bean counters, and we're bean growers, and they're just looking for a means of pushing stuff off of our books.
Okay. I mean, I guess the point is that the first several years of tenancy are at zero rent for Mona. So someone that would come in and look at that, would the DOF in any way try and void that lease, as saying that it is, this was not an arms-length transaction by any means?
No. In fact, what the department has indicated to us is, we'll never see those compensation agreements, because the city is making those with the taxing entities. That's outside our jurisdiction. You indicate that on your plan, that you intend to retain this for future development and enter into those agreements, and we're gonna approve your plan. It's then up to the taxing agencies to police you to actually go forward with those compensation agreements, or not allow a transfer.
Okay. Let's move to the one that really has me confused, and that's the Lemley Lofts, because I, I mean, I don't see myself as a financial expert, but I had read this report three or four times, and I really paid close attention to your discussion, and please explain it again as to what's going on with the Lemley Lofts.
In fact, that we're not as detailed in the report, because we were working with the Department of Finance very late to try and get this. So I will, when we initially entered into our agreement for the project was March of 2011, and it was to provide the property on which the Panda Inn sits on, that was the agency's property. The city was gonna contribute the parking lot, and the agency was gonna contribute a million and a half dollars towards that project. And we would build a five-screen Lemley Theater, 10,000 square feet of commercial and 42, 44 residential units above. At the time, we entered that agreement, we contemplated having all the parking in the exchange garage, which is 150 feet away. As we thought about that, the council asked staff, "Does that really work in Southern California to not have any parking?" And we all agreed, the council, the developer's staff, we all agreed that this would be a better project if it had at least one level of underground parking. That number that we figured, we estimated, was about $2.2 million, and the developer said, "I'll split it with you. I'll put in $1.1, you put in $1.1." So we amended our agreement to do that. That was done in November of 2011. When the Dissolution Act became effective, they went back to June of 2011 and said, "Everything before that is good, everything after that, void." So then we fell into the new dissolution rules to amend projects and agreements. And under the new rules, they say to amend a project, to amend agreement, you have to find that there's an increase in net revenue, that there's a decrease in liability, and that it's in the best interest of the taxing entities to do this amendment.
Okay. What kind of liability are you talking about?
The statute is not really clear on it, on what liability is. And that's why we believe that there are several areas, Jillian can give you a list of those, we think there's several areas where reduced liability. The way the department is looking at it is merely cost. Does it cost the successor agency less? And we don't believe that that's what the law says, but that's what they're basing their determination on. So they gave us a heads-up and said, "You know that amended agreement that your successor agency approved and your Oversight Board approved, and you guys, you didn't make that one finding, and then you went back and you made all three findings? We're gonna reject that as not reducing liabilities." So we were left with sue them and get a court to say, "No, that means that they are reducing liabilities," or do some other strategy. So what we've, what we're proposing, what staff is proposing, is that we go to, we take the first agreement that puts $1.5 million in, and all the property, and we say, "That's the one that we're going to put in our plan, and we want to enforce that obligation." And then, as a separate agreement, have the city provide the $1.1 million that was the additional amount. That was the reason for amending the agreement in the first place. The city will do that outside of the successor agency, so we don't even worry about that. Now, how do you account for the $1.1 million?
Okay. We're talking, that dollar amount, just so I'm clear, is the extra money we're kicking in to get the underground parking.
Correct.
But we never approved the deal without the parking, though. I mean, the only, we did approve it...
In March of 2011, we did.
That's why that deal is part of, that was a recognized obligation, the original project, but the follow-up, where you added the parking, was thrown into limbo, and...
Fell after the cutoff.
Because it fell after the line in the sand.
And did we actually vote on that? No.
In 11...
They voted on the second one also.
November of 11.
Two or three times, in fact.
Phil, you left out the part for the council certification on going back to the taxing entities to get...
Okay. You're correct. So what, the way that we were showing the department that there's an increase in revenues is, "Let us build this project." And when you look at the amount of money that we were going to put into the project and the value of the land, that is less than what all of us will realize if we build the project in increased property tax, sales tax, and fees, and everything else. Now, what that analysis showed, if you recall, is the city was the big winner on that. In fact, some of the other taxing entities, it was negative. They were losing money to do this. So what the council said is, "We'll tell you what, we'll take this windfall, if you will, if you'll call it that, and we'll share that with you so that everybody comes out the same." And then, in fact, there's about $250,000 more to the city, and that's through fees. So what we're proposing now is, it's really the same dollars, we just want to restructure them.
And just to be clear, that $1.1 million comes back to us with those fees and taxes, et cetera, and the other taxing entities, the school district, et cetera, will make more money off this project than they would have if it had stayed a redevelopment project, which is why we approved this when this came up to us last time more than once. When that analysis was shown to us, we said, "This, not only is it a good project, but we make money, and the school district makes more money than they would have if we just, you know, sell the project."
And I think it was the school district that they either made money or came really close, it was the county and the other taxing entities that were really underwater. And we said, "All right, we'll share that, because we want the project, it's not necessarily the extra money." It was the project that was important, because, if you recall, this is the northern anchor of the art and entertainment district with the library and the Museum of Neon Art to the south.
Right. Plus a great draw on the Lemley Theater for all of the restaurants and shops on North Brand, which right now have the Alex, and Portos, but don't have something that will bring people from the other, from the outside.
So, I'm sorry, when you said the $1.1 million will come back to us, what form does that come back to us?
The $1.1 million right now is sitting in cash in the successor agency reserve. So that was approved, I won't confuse it, that money was supposed to be used for this project, to build the underground parking.
Does that money go away if we don't use it on this?
We have that money, and what we're gonna say is, "We're not gonna use it." So it goes back to the taxing entities according to their split, and the city will receive about $150,000 of that $1.1 million. That was money that was gonna go into the project anyway. The other taxing entities will get their equivalent of $728,000 through that distribution and their fees and whatnot from building.
And the parking gets built, anyway?
I'm sorry?
And the parking still gets built, or no?
The parking will still get built, because instead of the successor agency putting that money in, the city's gonna put that money in.
And he asked how that money comes back to us.
That, well, the money comes back, the $1.1 million gets split up, we get about $150,000 of that. The rest of that money comes back through property tax, the increased property tax that we don't have to share with anybody now.
How much is the property tax? It's not that much.
I don't remember, but it's, it's...
Thirty thousand a year, maybe?
When we looked at it, the lion's share was in fees, building fees.
Yeah, but fees are, fees are not a windfall. Fees are, as, you know, by law, they're made to, they're adjusted to compensate staff time for their work on that.
And then, sales tax also came into the analysis.
Sales tax came into play, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have the...
How much, sales tax? How come we only get $150,000 out of the $1.1 million that would go in? Who gets the rest of it?
Let's back up for a second, because this has already been approved, that part has already been approved by us more than once. We're not looking at that configuration here.
Let's go forward. I still want this answer, whether we approved it, whether we rejected it. So the $1.1 million comes from the city, what, our reserves?
The $1.1...
You said city, so...
I know.
Don't confuse me.
Okay. Right now...
More, anymore than I am.
Right now, there is residual tax increment that comes to the city.
Right.
That $1.1 million will come through that residual property tax, that, at least up to this point, the council is, has identified for economic development and other asset management deployment. So these are monies that the general fund wasn't counting on, and in fact, our budget is based on not having those funds, and they're used for economic development.
Because it used to go to the redevelopment agency. Now it shifted over to the city coffers. I got that. So we're gonna pay $1.1 from this extra property tax that we've gotten from, what project kicks off $1.1 million in property taxes?
Well, it's the residual...
Residual?
Over, because we'll have two and a half years of residual property tax coming back to us before we have to make this payment. It's a reimbursement. The $1.1 is a reimbursement of a whole bunch of things. So we'll have a period of time to collect that residual tax increment, and it is what we were going to use to pay the $728,000. We were never gonna go into the general fund's reserve. We were gonna save up that increment as it came in.
Why is it split like that? Why, out of, let's say, a million-dollar payment, we're only getting...
We get 13.5 cents on the dollar on the property tax.
So the bulk of it goes to Sacramento, goes to the state?
Actually, it goes to schools.
It goes to the other taxing agencies, the county, takes about half, the school district's about 20%, the other taxing agencies are the rest. This is, and this is fixed, our percentage, Bob can give you this history, but our percentage is fixed after Proposition 13. That's what Glendale was charging in property tax at the time. That's what our distribution was frozen at. So we can't raise that.
I don't think we're gonna get much back from property tax, guys. Let's say it's a 20 million project, tax bill on that is 1%, which is 200,000, we get 13% back, what's 13% of 200,000? It's like 30,000 we're gonna get back.
Let's let Mr. Ochores respond.
But I think the difference, it's absolutely confusing. And just to be really clear, if we get 1% assessed valuation on that 30 million-dollar project, you would think, "Wow, you know, you're getting..." project, you would think, wow, you know, you're getting 300,000. Well, actually, you're getting 13%.
Percent of that.
Of the 13,000, right? That's how the property tax works, so we get smaller chunks. The other part of what Phil's talking about is the amount of money that's there that used to go to the redevelopment agency, that the county, the state wants us out of the property tax collection business. They, all that money that used to go to the agency, they don't want us to be touching that anymore, which is part of the reason why you're seeing us go through these machinations. So to the extent that we were getting a chunk, we won't get the full amount that the redevelopment agency used to get, separate and apart from what the city's share is, that residual that's left over from what used to flow to the redevelopment agency, over the next couple of years, we will take that, and instead of putting it into the general fund for operations, we'll take that and bank it to basically pay our obligation in '17 as we reimburse those other taxing entities.
What properties are kicking off that?
All of the properties in both project areas.
Americana.
Everything else.
All that money that, that's the residual.
Sure. Okay. So we're taking all these other properties, the tax from all these other properties, and we're going to be paying the Lemley parking for it, essentially, paying the 1.1 million for the Lemley parking.
Much the same way you did for, when you're paying debt service and taking the proceeds of a bond issue and dedicating them to one project here or one project there, it's the aggregate that comes from the redevelopment project area, that you decide where you want to make those investments around the project area. And in this case, you've made a decision previously that you wanted to take monies and invest them in that Lemley project.
So, so I'm saying then, I mean, successor agency would say that there's no better use for 1.1 million dollars than to put it to give the Lemley project that extra level of parking, which would make the, essentially, the extra level of parking. Do we, I mean, is that, because, let me tell you, that is not a option or analysis that ever came before me on this board. Nobody ever said, we've got all this residual that we're kicking off for the next three, four years, it's going to be, I don't know how much it's totally going to be, but it's at least 1.1 million, is there anything else that we want to do with that money? Other than keep the Lemley project afloat and surviving and to go through with it? I'm just saying, I never got that analysis. And maybe you gave it to me, but I think just by today's discussion, I think we've clearly indicated, this is a complicated, very detail-oriented, esoteric financial exercise we're going through. Personally, I would think that there's something better we could do with 1.1 million dollars in the city that would aid redevelopment, rather than put it into an extra level of underground parking. That's just my comment.
I would, I would answer the question this way, Mr. Njari, in that we didn't come to you and say, here's the money we have that we should have, what do you want to do with it? Rather, we said, this is a project that requires additional dollars of the agency, and the agency said, yes, do it. And then we came back as the successor agency and said, it's still required, you still want to do it, and the successor agency said, yes. And then when we had to figure out how we fund it, we came with the compensation agreements, and the successor agency said, yes. So, staff is taking the direction that, yes, you want this project to move forward, and it's structured in such a way right now that the department isn't letting us. We want to restructure that and go forward with the prior approvals of the project. And this is the way we have to do it. And I raise it because I want to make sure that you still want it, that you are comfortable with this new structure. It's same project and same dollars.
It's just, it's just extremely complex, I totally grant you that, but understand that the complexity is infused by the State Department of Finance, not by you and certainly not by our staff.
Yeah, I think that, I don't know whether the people who made these decisions realized what kind of permutations they were going to be throwing all the cities that had redevelopment areas into. And here we are, talking about ways of not having to sell the Alex Theater. With Lemley, you know, this was a project where we had committed these funds to, back when those funds had to be committed to redevelopment activities in the downtown. And this, you know, it got caught up in the middle of all of this after the developer had spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we had all gotten the community excited about having a Lemley Theater, and the businesses excited about having a Lemley Theater in North Brand. We are selling the parking garages at the Americana, you know, which is fine, as far as I'm concerned. But this has been a very traumatic and very time-consuming for cities and for our staff to deal with. It sounds like the DOF and the state don't even know how they want to do this. They keep changing the rules as we go along, which is, you know, makes things even more complicated. Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, we'll start with one of the comments that Mr. Ochoa made. I think that these successor agencies all over the state are voting their conscience, and I think, I'm sure they're mostly business people, community leaders, and I think they're understanding what's best for their community. That a willy-nilly sale of properties with a market that continues, well, it's flat now, but that went down in the past few years makes no sense at all. So I'm sure that that reaction from the DOF is the fact that local entities understand what's best for their cities may not fit with the overall plan from the state, but that's the way it is. On this particular property, the Lemley, to me, that's the key to the exchange. We're talking at this point about possibly closing the exchange area there, having access to the garages, but trying to make it into more of a courtyard, more of a pas de deux type feel. And I think this particular corner would be key to achieving that goal of trying to have a sustainable business environment there. Lemley is a tremendous draw, bringing back the, what's the name of the Chinese restaurant?
Panda Inn.
The Panda Inn, bringing back the Panda Inn with a whole new concept, because it wouldn't be the old-style Panda. I think would just be great for that little section of the downtown. So I hope we can pull it off, because I think it's well worth, you know, trying to bring it to fruition along with what we want to do to have a more courtyard, pas de deux type of effect, so, it's my feeling about it.
Over five years, almost, I've been looking forward to the Lemley coming to Glendale. I drive to Pasadena all the time to go to the Lemley Theater, at least I did before I had a baby. And I've watched over the years what that Lemley, which opened in Pasadena not that long ago, what happened to that area when the Lemley opened, and how restaurants have opened around it because it is such a draw, and how they're only there because of that theater. There was nothing on that part of Colorado before, there really wasn't. And now it's a really nice area to walk around, there's little shops, there's that big bookstore, there's restaurants, and they were there, they came in after Lemley because so many people would come to Lemley and wander around, and there was one restaurant, I remember, across the street that was, always had this huge line, just because there was no other place to eat. So we've been talking for a long time about Lemley. I can't believe that four or five years later, we're still talking about the Lemley. Let's just go ahead and do it already, get this project underway.
How strong are their financials? I mean, we looked at this four, five years ago, are they still strong?
Yes.
Because I don't want them to go out of business and have the Pussycat Theater go in there.
You, you, we have some safeguards in place, there's a covenant agreement that then has some repercussions. It needs to stay a theater for certain, needs to stay a Lemley for a certain period of time, needs to stay a theater for the certain period of time, and it will always be subject to our land use regulations in our GMC.
But I think the council has the authority to make it a burlesque theater, like a performance.
Yeah, whatnot. Totally, the one thing is, my understanding is, this is the first time that Lemley's going to own their space. Normally, they lease, and it's the first time that they're going to be owning part of that building. So they're going to be very invested in this building, more than even their other locations. They normally lease, this is their first ownership project.
That is correct. And in fact, they will have an interest, without going into too much detail, but in the whole project, not just the theater.
So the parking, although we're paying for half of it, will be theirs?
Parking will be part of the project, that's correct.
It will be, it'll be owned by Lemley. Well, they better be excited about this project because they're paying for half of their parking.
Yeah.
Expand the land.
Expand the land, yeah, so. I mean, I didn't vote on this in any way, so I don't, a lot of this is obviously you for me, it's interesting. But I just want to touch upon this issue of the residuals. Is the 1.1 million dollars all the residuals that we've accumulated so far, or we will have accumulated up until the point where it goes into use?
It's not the total amount.
But is it the majority? I mean, what's?
No, I don't have the cash flow in front of me, but I think by the time this is due, we will have generated something in the neighborhood of $3 million.
Okay.
Now, one of the things that we want to bring back to you is the Economic Development Corporation, and using that to fund the staff that's part of economic development. So that relieves the general fund of that burden. We have figured that in, and assumed that we could pay for that staff, those general fund obligations are being paid now, and subsidize, not subsidize, assist this project, as well as have other programming money for the economic development program that you want to.
Marketing promotions, tenant improvements, anything that you would want to invest in businesses to attract them here.
Okay.
All right, are there any more questions, or does somebody want to float a motion? Mr. Quintero?
I will move the item.
For a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Agency members, Njari.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Njari.
Yes.
Chair Weaver. Vice Chair Freedman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else on the agenda? We have a motion to adjourn.
Well, before we do, I just want to comment, and thank you for that presentation. Very impressed with your knowledge of the entire mess that we're in, and your ability to describe it in public. Seriously, that was, you did a very good job.
I move the adjournments.
We are adjourned.